Yeah, I think it makes sense, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
There's nothing in there.
The parade is that order.
Yeah, and actually, the way we wrote this was council and the order.
Okay. There was a lead and everybody did have good. Kind of disappointed in this software, yeah. I haven't talked about it. Alright, once we get the high sign, guys, we'll get started. Alright, welcome and good evening to the September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two Xenia City Council meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation led by Xenia Grace Chapel Pastor Dan Jordan. Thanks for being here, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Levi Dean. If you could please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are so appreciative and so thankful for the blessings that you give us. There's things we're aware of, and there's many things we don't recognize and see until six months or a year down the road. But we're so grateful that we can come to you. Father, we're grateful for our city and are so thankful for your hand of protection upon us. We pray for that continual protection over our city, for our first responders, for our schools and colleges that are in the area. We pray for our country, the leaders that we have. We're so thankful, Lord, that we can come to you. Thank you, Father, for our local city leaders here, for those who are giving their best to make our community the great community that it is. We ask you, Lord, to bless the businesses and the churches and the organizations in town that are here to help one another, our hospitals. Father, thank you so much for all that you're doing for us. We ask you give wisdom. We ask, Lord, that you would continue to teach us to treat each other the way that you would want us to do that. And so, thank you, Lord. We thank you for this time we can meet together and do the business of the city. Thank you, Father, again for your goodness, in your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you Pastor Dan Jordan, thank you Councilman Levi Dean. At this time, we will call our meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Here.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Deane?
Here.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Here.
Councilwoman Deane?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here.
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from our September eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes, please. Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Deane. At this time, I will ask if there's any questions, comments, concerns, or corrections to the minutes. And since we have none, we'll get a roll call to accept, please.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a special presentation, which none is scheduled for tonight, so we'll move on to audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting tonight, anyone in the audience would care to address City Council with your concerns. We would ask for you to give us your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to two to three minutes, please. Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
How's everybody? Greetings. So glad you let me get a chance to speak.
Can't hear you, sir.
I'm glad you got a chance to let me speak, seeing greetings everyone. My name is Steve Scott. I live at six thirty-five Paxton Drive in Yell Springs. I'm still active in the area. But I live, I come from eight thirty-three East Main Street in Xenia. And one of the things we did, one of our places that we went to communicate was at Lexington Park. My parents, at that time, knew a lot of people in the area. She, of course, was in the church and she had her own business, so she knew a lot of people there, especially in the east side, east side of Xenia. But one thing that happened was, knowing these people, even though I went to church with them, a lot of people I never would have got to know if I never would have went to Lexington Park. You know, for example, Scrivens, my parents might have known Scrivens' parents, but I didn't know him. I knew of him, seen him, but one of the things was, I got to know him, people like him, at Lexington Park. Lexington Park was a place where we communicated. Lexington Park was a place where we fellowshiped. Lexington Park was a place where we learned lessons at. Lexington Park was a place of our community. It was a place where we came and we fellowshiped, and we got to know each and every one of the people. I might have went to school with a family, but I didn't know that family's big brother or big sister. At that park, I got to know them. I remember they had a friend of mine by the name of Carlos Vining, and I went to school with Carlos. And Carlos passed away, and one thing, he let a tread mark to that park. I would watch that guy sit there, and what he would do is, he would take and shovel the snow. In other words, one would say there's lessons that was learned there. He would shovel the snow, probably about four or five inches of snow, from the basketball court, just so he can play basketball. It taught us lessons, dedication, how to communicate, mannerisms. So one of the things that, you know, here speaking, you know, that's a place of home for a lot of us. That's a place, like I said before, fellowship and communication. But I strongly represent that there's any type of development that, you know, that needs to be done up there. I hope you can, you know, receive into your heart that you may be able, you know, to complete it, you know, because it's needed. And not only that, I watched my ancestors and a lot of other people's, you know, footsteps run through there. That was an everyday place that we went and communicated at. So I say this to say that, you know, that's where my heart lies at, Lexington Park. And a lot of people, that's where their heart is at. So I hope you have the opportunity to do some type of development that might help the community. Alright, God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? Alright, so at this time, we'll move on from audience comments. We're going into old business, and our first item under old business is ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-four. This is a public hearing, and this is determining to proceed with the improvement of city streets and public ways by the lighting, therefore, within District Lighting District Three, known as Summerbrook South subdivision, for the years of two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-seven. So we're doing things just a little different. I confirmed with the law director, before we do introductions and motions, we are going to actually open for public comments first. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would care to come forward and speak in favor of these lighting district improvements. Alright, if anyone would care to come forward and speak against the proceeding of the improvements to city streets and public lighting. Alright, so at this time, we will close the public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-four and ask my colleagues, we have an introduction by Councilman Brannan at our last meeting.
I will move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Brannan. Do we have a second to his motion? Moved by Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. Any comments or questions from council? Alright, this time we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our next item under old business is ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-five. This is also titled a public hearing. This is amending and re-titling of chapters two fifty, two fifty-two, two fifty-four, in enacting chapters two fifty-three, two fifty-five, and two fifty-six of the Administrative Code as contained in Part Two of City Government, titled Six, known as the Administrative Code of the City of Xenia. This was introduced by Councilwoman Deane our last meeting, and at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would care to come forward and speak in favor of these amendments and re-titling. All exciting stuff. Alright, alright. If anyone would care to come forward and speak against re-titling any of these chapters or making any of these amendments, now's your opportunity to do so. Alright, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on twenty-two-two-thirty-five, and we had an introduction by Councilwoman Deane at our last meeting.
I would like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Deane. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Does any of my council members up here have any comments, questions, or concerns? Alright, seeing none, we'll move for roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thanks for bearing with us. Got a couple more here. Our next item is ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-six, also titled Public Hearing. This is approving the conveyance of a point-three-four-nine acre tract on Burnett Drive, authorizing a purchase and sale agreement with CIL Isotope Separations for the said conveyance. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would care to come forward and speak in favor of this sale property.
Hello. My name is Mike Steiger. I live in Centerville, Ohio. I am the Vice President of Engineering for CIL Isotope Separations, and I have been employed at CILs since two thousand. I am supportive of this amendment, as we own the property to the east and the property to the north. It would fastly help us improve during our expansions as we move forward. As many of you know, we are currently in a major expansion process going on, and as that has gone, we have already started scoping out our next several expansions at the site. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak in favor of the conveyance of land? Alright, if anyone would care to speak against the conveyance of land, now's your opportunity to do so. Alright, I don't see any movement in the audience, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-six, and we have an introduction at our last meeting by Councilman Brannan.
I'd like to move for passage, please.
Thank you, Councilman Brannan. Move for passage, and do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Deane. Any of our council members have any comments, questions, or concerns? Alright, thank you. This time, we'll go for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Alright, thank you, and thank you so much for your speaking, and congratulations on your expansion. At this time, we have ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-seven. This is also a public hearing. This is amending the official zoning map of the City of Xenia, Ohio, to rezone the property at three twelve Fairground Road, totaling eleven-point-nine-nine acres, from an R-one-A, one-family residential district to P-one public and institutional district. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-seven and ask if anyone would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of this amendment. Alright, if anyone would care to speak against this amendment, now's your opportunity to do so. Alright, we see no one come forward, so we'll close the public hearing on this item, and this was introduced at our last meeting by Councilwoman Deane.
I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Deane. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Brannan, thank you. Does any of our council members have any questions? At this time, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Upstate. Alright, thank you. Our next item is new business. This is ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-eight, titled An Emergency. This is amending ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-three to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Xenia for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first and declaring an emergency. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Council President. We are requesting additional appropriations for several purposes tonight. Many of these items are accompanied by an agenda item later this evening that's related to several of these projects. The first reason we're requesting an appropriation is for engineering to be done at the town site, or town square site. This engineering is estimated to cost eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We'll issue an RFP later this year for that purpose, and it would encapsulate engineering throughout those three blocks there, Church, Market, King, Galloway, and that area there. We're also requesting fifty-five thousand dollars be appropriated. This would cover costs related to the town square development. It would include dollars to extend the agreement with Dillon for their services through the end of the year, but also cover some financial advisory services, some survey work, and a few other things related to the town square development. We're requesting one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars be appropriated for the replacement of tornado sirens. These sirens are actually in, outside of the city, in various places throughout the county. This is offset by a county grant, so these are, these are dollars that will be fully reimbursed by the county. In fact, we've already received the county's check for this project. We're also asking an appropriation for the Collier property and the remediation efforts at that property. The total cost for that is estimated to be eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Of that, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars is covered by grant funds. We're requesting fifteen thousand dollars for a revamp of decorations during the holiday season in the downtown, and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty, or eight hundred and eighty-six dollars for additional dollars to replace a mid-sized mini excavator, excavator. I'd be happy to do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Duke at this time? Alright, so at this time, I will seek a motion to pass ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-eight as an emergency.
So moved by Councilman Scrivens.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. This time, I'll open the floor for any comments or concerns. See staff?
Just would mention to council that a lot of those expenses relate to engineering functions with the town square. We believe we can recapture those expenses on the backside, either through TIF or through property sale proceeds, but it's important for us to get that engineering done, so we can better understand the exact layout of roadways and so forth that allow us to get the subparcelling done and move forward with the practical improvement.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Yeah, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, for the Collier property, we've estimated our total cost of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, and we're getting six twenty-nine back from the state. That leaves us about two hundred and twenty. Is that for the cities, will we pick that up?
Yeah, we're required to provide that additional balance. We're hopeful, even through some mechanisms that we've already begun to employ, that we can utilize some staff time and cut down on the overall cost, which might allow more of those contractual service dollars to go to some of those core functions, so. But at least at the outset, that's the commitment that we've had to make.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone else?
I have a quick question about the sirens. I understand that that funding is coming through the county through the grant. I assume that it's our responsibility to take care of those since we are the, okay, so I'm just, why is it on here then?
Yeah, so I can clarify, and again, I would get into more detail, and that's the problem with these appropriations. A lot of these items have additional clarification that would come in the agenda report, but for the purposes of that one, for the appropriation, the city made application to the county for the grant solely because in order to have the implementation of a system that we would benefit from, all these sirens that are currently all wired together would have to be the eight hundred megahertz. These sirens that are not necessarily the responsibility of the city, that are outside of our jurisdiction, are hardwired to the sirens that are in our jurisdiction. So that's where we made application on behalf of multiple jurisdictions for the funding, because we would need to upgrade all of these under the new software system at one time. We've made clear to these other jurisdictions, however, that moving forward, the maintenance for those particular software components, as well as any future replacement of the sirens, would be on their respective jurisdiction.
Is it our responsibility to install them?
Through the grant, we will, we will, we'll let that project, so I think the answer would be yes. But again, we're trying to establish a system where there is benefit to the city, so I understand there's benefit to these jurisdictions, and one might ask, why are we doing work for them? Well, it's because we will then indirectly benefit by having a system that conforms to the National Weather Service.
Thank you, that makes sense, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Just one final thing, Mr. President. I have a fire. The excavator, now will we surplus out the one that we have and try to find an aftermarket for it, or what?
Yeah, I was going to address that later, but since you brought it up, now's a perfect time. We will need, there will be a lead time to get delivery, I think we're estimating April, and we will have need of utilization of the, of the current tracko. I mean, I almost hate to put it on the record, but we actually use that to help load our hoppers for salt season, for snow season. So we will have uses of that equipment over the winter, so we'll continue to use that till the new equipment is in, we project around April, after which, we will look to probably auction or gov deals or some type of service to recoup some type of value from that, from that unit.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Alright, we have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Move motion.
Nope, wait a minute. Yeah, we do. As an emergency, so at this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is item B, ordinance twenty-two-two-thirty-nine. This is an introduction approving the conveyance of point-zero-five-one-seven acres of city-owned property to Mr. Brian Ryan. This time, I'll turn the floor over to our City Manager.
Thank you, sir. As approved by City Council Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-EE on May twenty-sixth, city staff has listed the former Xenia Adult Recreation and Services Center at one thirty East Church Street for sale. This has been listed with the commercial realtor. As part of the survey work done in preparation for listing the property, staff discovered an easement that was written into the deed. There's an adjacent parcel claiming access to this as a shared driveway along the northeast side of the property. This driveway is exclusively used by that adjacent property owner, does not materially affect the value of the primary facility and property. We think it makes sense to make that available to the adjoining property owner, who is Mr. Brian Ryan. He's obviously desirous of having that, because that's his primary means of access to his property, his driveway. Staff presented the recommendation of the conveyance to the property, to Mr. Ryan, to the Property Management Committee, which endorsed the action. The ordinance presented would formally approve that transfer, and so we recommend introduction of that ordinance this evening.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Any questions for the City Manager regarding this property?
One question.
Yes, sir.
So Brent, when we, if we proceed with this, and we proceed with the sale of the senior center, then if the city is divested of all that property?
Yes, and so part of the resurveying is we are, we are separating the existing municipal parking lot.
Correct.
So there'd be sufficient parking around the former senior center building for whatever business or purpose might be there. But we do use that municipal parking lot for daytime parking for our public safety forces and folks.
But all the rest of the property outside the parking lot, then we would be divested of that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Any other questions? Alright, alright. Who would care to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Deane, thank you. Our next item is Resolution twenty-two-two-triple-D. This is approving a preliminary consent legislation for the installation of reflective pavement markings on US thirty-five by the Ohio Department of Transportation. This time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you again, sir. The Engineering Division received a request from the Ohio Department of Transportation seeking City Council adoption of the attached preliminary legislation to authorize the department to install reflective pavement markings on US thirty-five within the city's corporation limit. This is a portion of the roadway that we're responsible for. This project would be administered by ODOT, and there will be no city funds expended to complete the work. ODOT's requested that the standard preliminary legislation be adopted, so that their design work can be completed in twenty-two, and the reflective markings installed in twenty-twenty-three, so essentially, this is a housekeeping item that they require that the council would adopt.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Any questions for him? Alright, this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the legislation. Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Brannan. Any further discussion? This time, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is Resolution D, Resolution twenty-two-two-triple-E. This is authorizing the submission of an application for federal funding through MVRPC for the West Main Street from, known as Orange Street, to Church Street Rehabilitation Project. So at this time, we'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayorman.
Also tonight, from our Engineering Division, is word that notice was given from Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is soliciting local jurisdictions, local jurisdictions to submit applications for funding through its Transportation Improvement Program. Funds available through MVRPC are regionally controlled federal funds, including the Surface Transportation Program Funds, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program Funds, and Transportation Alternative Program Funds. Funding is limited to qualified projects, and for this round of applications, the Engineering Division would like to apply for resources to rehabilitate West Main Street. This would run from Orange Street to Church Street. Because construction would not occur for approximately four or five years, staff believes this project would be a nice complement to the anticipated upgrades to Xenia Town Square, which we see happening over the next three to four years, so we are seeking authorization through the provided resolution to submit the application for that purpose.
Alright, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Mayorman? Alright, this time, I'll seek a motion authorizing the application submitted.
Some of them.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Deane. Any further questions, concerns? Let's just go ahead for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Deane?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is Resolution twenty-two-two-triple-F. This is authorizing the purchase of a mid-sized excavator for Public Service Department from Murphy Tractor Equipment Company through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. At this time, I'll turn the floor back over to our City Manager.
Thank you, sir. As was initially mentioned during the appropriation ordinance item, our Public Service Department is seeking authorization to purchase a new mid-sized excavator through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company. This would be under contract zero-three-two-one-one-nine-dash-JDC. This would be at a cost not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This replacement has been in our CIP for several cycles. It would allow for the replacement of a nineteen ninety-nine model that has accumulated over three-two-hundred hours of service time. To date, we've expended over forty-three thousand dollars for maintenance on that current tracko unit, and so obviously, costs are beginning to add. The proposed model for acquisition is a smaller mid-sized excavator, easy for me to say. Staff believes that this will provide a significant enhancement of our service capacity, but not have us compromise on the overall functionality. We think actually, there'd be a broader range of projects, because the scale of this would allow us to get into locations that we have trouble with today. A really great example of that, we're trying to do as much in-house demolition of, for example, residential properties. It's hard for us to do that with the full-size tracko that we have today, and typically, we have to rent a mid-sized excavator, and that runs about three thousand dollars a week to rent. So this, this is not just a newer unit, but a more functional unit for our purposes. Another key point to note, there are some features to this particular unit that would provide some efficiency enhancements. It's a lot easier to swap out the attachments to the arm. The treads on this are rubberized tread versus the metal treads, so we have to be very careful that we're not damaging asphalt in yards and things like that when we use the current tracko. So again, given the maintenance condition, maintenance concerns, the age of the equipment, and the limited functionality, we believe this would be a significant enhancement to our productivity. The agenda report obviously details some of this, can answer any questions you might have, but we are requesting authorization through the resolution this evening to move forward with this planned purchase.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman? This time, I'll seek a motion, authorization to purchase of that excavator. This time I'll seek a motion, authorization to purchase of that excavator. Some have moved by, I'm sorry, Councilman Branum. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any further discussion? Got to have those tools right. All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-G. This is approving the final plat and authorizing City Manager to execute the subdivision agreement for Eden Bridge Section 2 subdivision. Mr. Mayorman, floor yours.
Thank you, sir. I'll take a little more time and kind of walk through this. The developer of Eden Bridge subdivision is desiring to move forward with the second section of development, the preliminary plat for which includes a 5.754-acre tract consisting of 10 single-family home lots, six duplex lots, and two open space lots. This section's primary purpose is to complete an extension of Greystoke Drive to Van Eaton Road. This would provide the required two means of ingress egress to the subdivision. Developers worked with the planning department to incorporate adjustments to the overall design to address various issues, specifically some traffic-related concerns that we had. Additional conditions were attached to the final plat by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which approved that final plat on August 4th. The details of those conditions were included in your Agenda Report and, I think, a bulleted list. The Land Development Code additionally necessitates City Council approval if the required public improvements have not yet been installed, as is the case in this particular situation. Council approval is also required to authorize execution of the subdivision agreement that establishes requirements for public improvement, construction, and bonding before and after the plat is recorded. The proposed subdivision agreement incorporates the conditions required by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Given all these factors, all requirements have been met for councils and now considered the matter. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution to approve the final plat and allow for the execution of the subdivision agreement and allow them to move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Questions for Mr. Mayorman or Mr. Forchner, they're both here tonight?
Great, I've got a question.
Yes.
Yeah, so Brent to you or to Brian as you choose. So we're getting two dedicated parcels that are going to go to the homeowners association, and I understand that maintenance of that will be the responsibility of homeowners association, but as we've seen many times in the past 10 years downstream, the homeowners may get irritated with having a homeowners association and vote to dissolve it. So who, 10 years from now, is going to have the responsibility for maintaining those two parcels when the, potentially the homeowners association dissolves at that point?
Yeah, I think it's a legitimate question. I'll ask the city planner to comment, I'll ask maybe the law director as well. I think your concern is well-founded. I think the system in place today is not ideal. We've had some of these situations where HOAs have essentially been disbanded and dissolved, and it does create a problem for us.
Yeah, that parcel's going to be conveyed to the HOA, so it's going to be their responsibility, definitely, unless and until they sell it to somebody else.
So we've got similar parcels like that, though, don't we? Where homeowners associations have dissolved, what's occurred with those parcels and the other subdivisions?
Well, we, the only homeowners association that I know of that formally dissolved was Sterling Green. I'm not aware, there were some easements in there for drainage, but there was not land owned by that HOA.
Okay, so there, that drainage pond was originally beaded to all the?
Yeah, basically responsibility of that reverted to the homeowner that owns the land on which that sits.
Right, right, right.
Whereas in this case, this is going to be a separate parcel that is owned by the HOA.
Okay.
So there isn't really a way that the city would automatically become responsible for that unless the city agrees to accept it.
Okay, so we're not planning on taking maintenance responsibility, and that'd be the same thing if, if that's not being maintained and we have to go do the mowing or the cleanup, we would issue an assessment against the owner?
That's correct.
Right. That would be the plan, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand the, there isn't really a perfect solution with these open space parcels. I, you know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be recommending that the city take on these, accept them as dedication. The HOA is really just the, it's an imperfect solution, but it's probably the best solution.
So are those the, are those parcels the ones that are behind Bethel Missionary Church?
Yeah, it's actually one parcel. It looks like two parcels, but that, that point, there's a point where it's literally inches from the right away.
Right, right.
But, but yeah, that's behind that church.
Okay.
Along with the entrance to the subdivision with the detention basin is that's also going to be maintained by the HOA.
By the HOA, right, right. That's a much more substantial parcel there, right?
Yeah, I would just add that I think your concern, Councilman, is recognized. I think it's something that we've talked a little bit about. You can see some hesitation on our part, but I think that it's something we can look at in updates to our Land Development Code to determine what other fail safes perhaps we could look at incorporating into code so that, you know, that the properties are properly maintained, that the city doesn't have to end up being responsible for these types of properties.
Right.
As Brian said, it's an imperfect system, but there's not right now within our code construct a really good alternative.
Right. So I guess all I'd say is I know we're going to be doing a review of the Land Development Code. We probably want to look at some recourse in there, if we identify the fact that there are going to be HOAs that have maintenance of property in terms of what then occurs if the HOA dissolves, and what's the process for identifying who has the maintenance responsibilities of those properties in the future? Or whether we're looking for the HOAs to set aside funds for maintenance of their property? I don't know, but I'm just a little bit leery of us, and I understand what you're saying. This is a hard thing, whether we, you know, direct it towards individual property owners, and then they get, they've got that maintenance responsibility, right? Which is what we've done in some other subdivisions, and that's not a perfect solution either.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, the HOA will own the property indefinitely, so that HOA will always be responsible. Now, if the HOA decides to dissolve, then you end up with no property owner.
Right.
So I don't know, I mean, we haven't had a situation where the HOA has actually owned a piece of property that dissolved itself.
So, okay.
You know, we haven't had that happen in the past. We only had it happen in one subdivision where that HOA didn't own any property.
Okay.
So I understand, you know, the uncertainty, but I don't think, other than deeding the property to the HOA or another private property owner, there isn't really?
Yeah, okay.
An alternative.
Does right cycle estate, is the HOA there?
There is no HOA there.
Okay, all right.
They have an informal neighbor association, but it's not a formal HOA. Now, the new sections of that subdivision will form an HOA.
Have an HOA, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone answer your questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Forchner. Any other questions for either the City Manager or Mr. Forchner at this time? All right, this time I'll seek a motion to approve the final plat.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Ursula.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Go ahead.
Councilman Branum.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
Vice President Smith. Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-H. This is providing for assessments to be levied and authorizing the Finance Director to certify those assessments to the Greene County Auditor. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Council President. Staff is requesting that council authorize certification of assessments to the County Auditor for three purposes. The first is for weed mowing. That total is $119,368.50. The second is for trash cleanup, in a total of $24,015. And finally, demolition for $24,175.70. This is the first assessment that we're requesting here in 2022, which is why there are some fairly substantial amounts there. Some of these assessments date back to last November for the timeframe when the services were provided. I'd also note that this, with what was passed actually earlier this evening in the Finance Chapter, assessments won't be required after the first of the year to come back to council for approval. That'll allow us to certify these on a more regular basis, so hopefully we can get these assessments on those properties in a more timely fashion as the new code becomes effective.
So just curious, of these dollars, what percentage do we ever recoup this ballpark?
Well, that's somewhat difficult to say. Theoretically, we should recoup it all. The only scenario in which we wouldn't recoup it is if there's a property who's not paying their taxes, ultimately the property's upside down and it goes through a process where those taxes are ultimately written off. That doesn't happen a whole lot in the current environment, and we're hoping that with more aggressive measures being taken by the county to pursue delinquent tax, properties that are delinquent in their taxes more quickly, that it would be even less frequent. But it doesn't happen very regularly, so a very large percentage of these dollars are collected, but there are some rare circumstances where the taxes aren't paid and the property goes through the entire process, and ultimately the municipality, as well as any other agency that has any property taxes due, all take a hit in those scenarios, but it's a pretty small percentage.
All right, thank you.
I think if I remember right, when I went over this with Craig, we're owed in total about $850,000 in past due assessments, but that includes property as well as the property maintenance, and I think he said the property maintenance portion was about $125,000. So it's, I mean, $125,000 is $125,000, but in terms of overall significance, in terms of what we do, it's not that, you know?
I could give you a specific number because we break it out as receivable in our financials. I don't know it off the top of my head, but if you wanted to know specifics on, you know, how much is outstanding from a special assessment standpoint, we could get you the number.
No worries. All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Duke? All right, this time I'll seek a motion to provide the assessments.
I'll move.
Moved by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Branum. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branum.
Aye.
Vice President Smith.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022-I. This is determining that properties known as Xenia Town Square are not needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the City Manager to negotiate the sale of such properties in whole or in part. This time I'll turn the floor over to our City Manager, Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. City Charter now requires that before any city-owned real property can be considered for sale, that the property first be designated as not needed for any municipal purpose. With this in mind, staff is recommending council-approved Resolution 2022-I, which would formally designate this city-owned property collectively known as Xenia Town Square as not being needed for a city purpose. As council is aware, staff's been working with our development partner diligently through the course of this year to craft and refine comprehensive redevelopment plans for this important location here in the heart of our community. Approval of the resolution will authorize staff to transition to the next critical phase of planning for the site as we look to subdivide and divest of segments of the property to position it for reinvestment and a redevelopment. We are recommending approval of the item this evening so we can advance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. Questions for our City Manager? I think we've all talked about this one. All right, this time I'll seek a motion to authorize City Manager to negotiate the sale.
Submissed.
Moved by the mayor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any further discussion? All right, this time I'll ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branum.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-J. This is authorizing a development service agreement with Dillon LLC. This time I'll turn the floor back over to our City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Again, as discussed with the prior item, we have been working closely with Dillon LLC as our development consultant to cultivate new vision, craft a implementation set of priorities and strategies for the town square. Even as the core priorities and vision for redevelopment have not changed from those identified through our public and stakeholder input process, the scope and timing of redevelopment activities have substantially changed over the course of this year for a number of reasons, most notably because of recent developments with the Ramada Hotel Site and council's determination to move in a different direction there. Item I tonight thus presents the proposed development services agreement with Dillon that builds upon the work that we've already completed to date. It allows for additional refinement of the components of the plan into formal action steps to include specific redevelopment of that corner of the property, provides for detailed public financing options by an independent third party, and takes necessary steps to prepare the first lot for sale. And while I can't get into the details, we would hope to have that proposal for that first transaction by the end of the year.
All right, what else? Is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorman regarding the service agreement? All right, this time we'll accept a motion to proceed with the agreement.
So move.
All right, I think we got a motion by Councilman Dean, and we'll do the second, Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Any further discussion? Did you get that, Michelle?
Councilwoman Dean, Councilwoman Dean.
Thank you. All right, this time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Ursula.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Branum.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item under new business, and there's been a lot tonight, is Resolution 2022-K, authorizing, I'm sorry, accepting the amounts and tax rates certified by Greene County Budget Commission for 2023 and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying those tax levies to the Greene County Auditor. This time we'll turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. We are requesting tonight that council approve or accept these rates. This is a requirement under the revised code, and we're required to submit proof of certification by the end of the month. The County Budget Commission certified estimated revenue totals of $1.872,000 for property tax and $788,149 for the local government allocation for the year 2023. I wouldn't put a whole lot of emphasis on these numbers, they're just estimates by the County Auditor, more of a formality. Typically, the amounts that we actually receive exceed what's here in the certification. You will see that there's a decrease in the amount certified of around $60,000 for the property tax piece. I actually think that our property tax revenue will exceed the prior year when all is said and done, so I think property taxes collected in 2023 will actually exceed what we've received in 2022, but this is something that's required as a part of the state process, and these are numbers that were approved in the tax budget. When we bring the final operating budget, we'll actually have larger numbers than we think are more in line with the actual revenues that we'll receive related to property tax and local government revenue, so we're requesting passage this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Duke?
Just a couple comments. So Ryan, with that gross number, we're also submitting our millage rates for their approval as well, right? Is that correct?
We're accepting the estimated revenue that would be generated by those millage rates, which is 3.2 of inside millage and 3.5 of outside millage. The outside millage has an effective rate closer to 1 mill.
Right.
But yeah, we're really accepting the rates that are related to the millage, both inside and outside. We would accept any more inside millage, but I'm pretty sure no one's going to give us. Yeah, it's never available.
Right. So just for the audience, so by state law, we, a property owner, the various entities can collect 10 mills of what's called inside millage, and that's actual, that's 1% of the actual value of the property. Is that correct? 10 mills is 1%?
It's 10 mills would, yes, because it's 1/1,000th, so yeah, it'd basically be 1%.
1%, right.
Yeah.
But the county gets to allocate those 10 mills. They're the approval authority of how those are allocated. So our city has 3.
We have 3.2 of the 10.
Of the 10, and the rest are allocated either to the school system or to county agencies and those types of things. And we have, part of the submittal is, because we have to be approved by the county for that inside millage. They, at the end of the day, are the determination of that, right?
Right.
And the remainder of our millage, the 3.5%, is based upon the original date of the passage of that. And since that was passed so long ago in the 70s, it has an effective, because you can never collect more than the actual value of the year that was passed.
Right. So the outside millage of 3.5, outside millage is also sometimes referred to as voted millage. That levy was actually approved back in the 50s.
Okay, the 50s, right.
But the limitation on the millage didn't come about until the 70s. So we're capped at those rates that we were collecting in the 70s.
Right.
So we're essentially collecting the same amount for that levy today as what it generated back in the 70s.
Right. So that hasn't, that hasn't increased with property values since
Correct.
that timeframe, right?
That's why I would say it's the effective amount is much lower than what the actual.
Right. So our, our effective amount is about, is less than a half a percent of the value of the property. Because it's four, it'll be around 4.2, or point, 4.2 mills, right?
In total, yes, you could arrive at that number, about 4.2 mills, because your actual millage is 1% on the outside millage.
And just to let folks know, we pay about 60 mills total for county and schools and other services. And the amount that is actually collected by the city for all the city's services, police, fire, roads, sewers, from a property tax perspective, is on the same rate as what we pay to the joint vocational school. Because they have 4.5 mills that we each pay in actual millage, inside millage, to the joint vocational school. So, yeah. And I'm not demeaning that. I'm just saying that we don't collect much from a property, from a relative perspective. When you pay your property taxes, about 8% of that goes to city and city services, and the other 92% go to county and school services.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke? All right. This time I'll seek a motion to accept the tax rates. Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Brannan. All right. This time I'll seek a roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Next on our revised agenda is Resolution 2022 III. This is authorizing a purchase of four new tornado sirens from Federal Sign, Signal Corporation, excuse me, sorry for that butcher. This time I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Merriman.
Yeah, let me see if I can offer a little more background on this item than what was discussed on the appropriations. So Xenia Green Central Communications Center is responsible for acting the tornado sirens for any of the jurisdictions that we dispatch for, and obviously, we dispatch for not just the city of Xenia, but large areas of an unincorporated township, as well as some of the other smaller municipal jurisdictions, Jamestown, Cedarville, and so forth. The original tornado activation system was hardwired and activated all of the tornado sirens in our area at the same time because the National Weather Service, rather, used to approach tornado warnings on a county-by-county basis. So if there was a cell in Green County that was tornadic in nature, they believed, they would issue a tornado warning for all of Green County. Well, their methodology has changed. They now create these what we call polygon warning areas. So they are trying to triangulate the path that they think a system is taking so as to not unnecessarily scare people. Our system is not wired to do that. So we have been seeking a solution for this, as we've talked about in prior council meetings. There have been occasions even this year where we've had to launch tornado sirens that have gone off here in Green County, or I should say here in Xenia. The sun is shining. There's no threat to the city of Xenia. But clear down by Jamestown, south, you know, west of Jamestown, there was a small cell that had activated from the National Weather Service. So we're trying to correct that system and improve it. Our communications director submitted an application to the county seeking some ARPA funds to help implement a new system, as we discussed earlier. That new system is a software upgrade that allows us to be able to triangulate, plug right into NWS. When they issue a warning, it would automatically digitally alert within our system, and our dispatchers wouldn't even have to be a part of that relay system. However, this system does require that the signals, the sirens themselves, be on an 800 megahertz frequency, while the city of Xenia and Xenia Township sirens are currently on that platform. Sirens in various other jurisdictions, including Cedarville, Clifton, Jamestown, Spring Valley, are not. So what the grant would do would allow us to replace those sirens, upgrade them, and then implement this software throughout the entire system so that we'd be able to have this more contemporary approach. And again, as noted earlier, while this is benefiting jurisdictions outside of the city of Xenia, because it's part of our dispatch infrastructure and service, we would be letting the project. So this would authorize the purchase of these four tornado sirens from Federal Signal. We are asking for this to be done as a, based on proprietary purposes, that the signals go with the system. So we are seeking council's approval of resolution to do so this evening.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Merriman? All right. This time I'll seek a motion to authorize the purchase of tornado sirens. Moved by Councilman Dean. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. All right. Further discussion? And I'm not seeing any, so at this time we'll go for a roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointed officials' reports. So tonight we'll start with Mr. Duke.
I have nothing else for you to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any questions for our finance director tonight? And our assistant finance directors and the audience. Thanks, Jason, for being here. Appreciate that. So next we'll go with our law director.
I have nothing for that.
All right. Thank you. Who has anything for Madam Law Director tonight? And yeah, the legislative meeting tonight?
I'm sorry, sir.
Legislative review meeting tonight?
We did have legislative review. We reviewed the city manager chapters of the administrative code. Those will be presented to you at your next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. So I'd like to thank the mayor, Councilman Scrivens, Councilwoman Dean, right? You've been here since 4 o'clock tonight, so thank you for your time, for serving that. And we'll see you in two meetings, right? All right.
Well, longer than that, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. So next is Mr. Merriman. Thank you.
All right. I am compelled to provide a report on Lexington Park. Before I do that, I would like to address briefly another matter. This past week, there were, as has been approved by council, delivery of bird mobility devices, the scooters, this past weekend. It's ruffled some feathers. I couldn't resist. I want to say that we were not totally prepared for that delivery. We knew that they were coming in. We weren't given a specific date. Hindsight is 2020, and had we known, we would definitely have approached that rollout a little differently. Want to make a couple key points and make council aware of what we're doing to follow up. A lot of conjecture in the communities. Want to clarify, this city's not paying for the scooters. There's no cost associated with it for the city. This is not a revenue center for the city. We're not making money off of it. It's council authorized the service in the community. We'll give it a try here. And so there are some concerns that have been raised. I think there are a few legitimate concerns about how they're placed and so forth. We do have a meeting scheduled with representatives of the company, the local maintenance individual, for early next week. Once we have that meeting, we will try to be aggressive in putting out more information on where can you use these, how they should be placed. Again, had the timing of the delivery been a little more known, we probably would have done things a little differently. So we're playing catch-up a little bit, but there are a few concerns that I think are legitimate that we want to address and make sure that if the service is provided in the city, it's done in a good, in a good manner. So we'll follow back up with council after we have that conversation. Second, I can do a brief overview of the report that we've provided. I emailed a copy of this to council earlier today electronically. You should have all received a copy at your desk here this evening. Staff has spent considerable time here in the last two weeks to evaluate the items that we originally recommended and were approved for implementation at Lexington Park. And then, so that's one section of the report, and I have a second section that details additional items that were included in the motion from your last meeting. So if it's all right, I'll just kind of skim through from table one, an update on those items that were originally approved by council and for which we had appropriations of funds. So we had a removal of the existing parking lot. That's been completed by staff. That's been completed for a while now. Installation of barrier fencing. We opted for a split rail fence there. Should be aesthetically pleasing. Financially, not a terrible commitment. Total cost at $68.22. That should be complete by the end of October. In fact, I think I got messaging earlier today that they'll be out starting next week to install that. The welcome signage, this is actually the formal aluminum siding, signage that we do in our parks. That is being finished, the fabrication that's being finished, a total of $5,545. We estimate that that can be installed here in October, within the first couple of weeks of October. We'll also accompany that with park use regulations. That signage is a minimal expense, and we'll install that with the, with the more ornamental sign. Installing security camera system. We've done an initial analysis of this and received a quote at $15,477. However, we've run into some problems with this. I think the staff feels this is an important security component for the park. But we are needing to do some more planning, some more evaluation to determine, from a practical standpoint, how we do this. There's no fiber drop to the park, so we're going to have to extend a line to be able to patch this into our system over some network services. So we're still evaluating the engineering of that that could then affect the cost. So that's one element that we've not been able to follow up yet. And if I'm being very candid, based on limited resources, or I should say limited supply of some of that equipment, it will probably be next year before that, that project is complete. Entry and exit gates, that purchase has been made. That was $721.24. We can install that really at any time. We're delaying the installation of that. It makes sense to pair several of these projects together and do them all at once. It'd be much more efficient for our staff. So we've actually received those gates, or received those gates and can install those. Additionally, based on feedback from council, we have the resources to move forward with crack sealing and resurfacing with a seal coat, both the basketball court as well as the, what I call the park driveway, the area, the drive area, parking area up by the restroom facility. $8,306.83. And again, that's been completed. So again, our total expenditure to date is $21,495.07. Based on the curtain estimate, that goes up to, as you can see, near $40,000 with the camera system, but we have a little bit of work to do. I included in the report just some images down there to give you a sense of what that park sign will look like, the seal coating that we've completed, and again, you get a sense of the condition of the parking lot. Upon further analysis of that, there's no appropriate base for that parking lot. So it's, the milling fill is not really appropriate. We have to completely replace the parking lot. That takes us then to section two of the report. The table there on page six outlines, I think, there are a total of 11 items that were listed, some of which are overlap with the prior list. I'll kind of run dumb through these things. Transition basketball courts to two high school regulation courts with new poles, backboards, and hoops. We've estimated that out, and the estimate came out, I think we rounded it up to $30,000, it was a little less. Installation of that, we think, would have to be spring of '23. Resurfacing line the basketball courts to include community names at court size provided in Lexington Park group. Again, we've already done the resurfacing at the price point indicated. The additional lining, painting, so forth, we think would be $1,000 or less. Council can authorize that commemorative naming at any point. If you indicate exactly what you want to do, we can come back with a resolution to do that. Installation of fencing around the basketball court. We looked at two options here. Depending on exactly what you're trying to accomplish, a four-foot aluminum fence would be $8,840. A six-foot chain link fence would be just a smidge, under $11,000. Again, at this point in the season and given very limited supplies availability, that would be a spring '23 project. Completing asphalt resurfacing, parking lot lining at the north parking lot area. Again, as I indicated, that's a resurfacing. We can't just put a layer of asphalt on top of that. So that would be a little over $40,000. Staff would line that. I want to be clear about this particular point with both this as well as this other item later on, installing a walking path. We were able to secure a coat from Butler Asphalt to do some work. It's pretty late in the year to try to secure a quote for this type of services. They'll be shutting down the asphalt plants here in the next couple of months. They did us a solid and said that they could, they could do a scope of work for us. So we appreciate their efforts in helping to meet us halfway. The problem is we, you know, it'd be most efficient to do these things together. But to do them together, as you can see, if you look further down the list, installing that walkway would be an additional $26,000. So that takes you over $60,000. That exceeds our bid threshold and threshold that I can authorize. So we would have to both appropriate the dollars, but also go through a bidding process for that, which means we would need to get bid apps together, go through a formal bidding process, award the bid. And there's no way we can do all of that in this season. So if council was to elect to move forward with an asphalt project this year, we would suggest that you do one or the other. One or the other, we could do yet this year. Otherwise, it would have to, have to wait till next year. Additionally, the park sign, park rules, that's easy. That's 100 bucks. We can do that this year. We've already got the barriers, as I've mentioned. Installing grills, those run 400 to 500 bucks a piece, so we could do two of those for $1,000. That could be done this fall. Benses at the playground. We do have some of our ornamental benches that we've been working to rehab. So these would not be new, but they'd be in the same family. These are the nice teak wood with ornamental metal ends. So they would look, they would look brand new. Again, we can, we have those materials in-house, and we could install those yet this fall. The walkway, as I mentioned, is a little over $26,000. Installing a drinking fountain, this actually is not very cheap. A drinking fountain fixture is about $6,000. If you wish to put that where the current water line terminus is, near the garden plot areas, we can do that project in-house. If you want that to be closer to your basketball and shelter amenities, we'd have to tee that water line, run additional water line across the park area. So we're estimating the materials and supplies for that to be about $2,000 additional. And then, of course, we've, we've listed here already the installation of the split rail fence. If you take all of those projects collectively, and I assumed for your total down there that you went with the cheaper four-foot aluminum fence and that you kept the drinking fountain essentially where the water line is now, that would run you just shy of $138,000. And again, depending on your options for a couple, it'd be a little bit more. That does not include the cost of our labor, which is really more of an in-kind, or a opportunity cost expense. I would have you note also, both pages five and six there, some, just some other points. I've mentioned a couple of these in terms of timing. We're estimating installation timing, but materials and supplies availability would go a long way toward determining exactly when some of these things could be done. So while some of these things would be very easy, such as benches to install this year, the drinking fountain, I can't guarantee that we would get those supplies in time this year. Obviously, the asphalt, we would really need a decision tonight on the asphalt work. We have to let them know this week so they can fit that into their, into their calendar yet this year. Again, tried to be comprehensive in what we've provided here, giving some context. If you have questions, I certainly can answer them. Mr. Berger is here. He's done quite a bit of work to help prepare this as well. So any of the specifics in terms of procedures, he can help answer questions to.
I'd say Brent, thanks. This is great work, and this also helps spoke some things that people might think are, that's not, that's not a difficult thing to do or realize, especially with the cost of asphalt right now. Even that smaller parking area is a huge cost, right, to be able to finish that out and stuff.
Yeah, and even things like a drinking fountain, it doesn't seem like a very big thing, but in today's world, that's a, you know, that's a $6,000 expense. That's a quote right out of the book. I mean, we know specifically how much that would be. So nothing's cheap anymore.
Yeah. But I think this, this gives us what we needed to know, which was cost, timing, those kind of things. I guess what I would recommend is that we take this back to one of our working committees and let them engage on that. And I guess maybe ask you which one of the committees would be the most appropriate.
Probably Public Service.
That's what I was thinking, Public Service, and let us engage. And then also let the Public Service Committee engage with the community association too and say, folks, here's the, here's the list, right? And let's talk about what the priorities are and where the community would like to engage with us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would maybe add to that. If that's the approach that council would elect to take. The council has previously indicated you'd like to use in the ballpark of a half a million dollars of ARPA monies for quality of life types of projects. I think our assumption is to the extent that you are doing some of these projects, that you're using those dollars. So that means that council does have some resources available. If you're going to send this issue back to committee, you might also charge that committee with thinking about some other similar projects, as some of the other community parks. And then, and the reason that's important for us is a lot of these projects would be done in-house. And so whether that's. And so whether that's this fall or next spring, how we would budget our time in terms of our maintenance staff, we're already engaging in conversation about project load for next year. So if you would elect to spread some love to some of these other community parks as well with some similar types of investments and, you know, drinking fountain, for example, Beverly Hills Park, they need a new drinking fountain there. That one's been out of service for many years. So again, if you, if you elect to move in that direction, you could extend that charge a little bit to look at some of your other parks as well.
I don't know that, I guess I'll make, so I don't know that we need to move money on these tonight because I think we got the information we need. And now we need to step back and talk to community folks. There may be a couple of these low-hanging fruit that we could go ahead and get moving this fall, like you said, right? And then, and then, like you said, start looking at what would be appropriate for next spring. And then also talk to the Community Association too and say, okay, now we all know, right, what the, what the prices are for these and if they want to do some fundraising to help us on some of these, we can, we can engage with them. But the thing is, unlike the other parks, we actually have a community that's involved with this one and wants to see a number of improvements. We haven't necessarily had that kind of communication from any other neighborhoods at this point, but not that we can't proceed with those. But anyways, I think you guys did great work to get us the information we were asking for. Yeah, and so kudos to you guys. Chris, thanks for helping getting all this stuff put together.
Also, Herschel, just to bring up as well, parks was definitely one of the hot topics for the next plan meeting that we had last, this past Monday as well. So that's all being incorporated, incorporated into that as well. Brian's well aware of, and all the individuals, that was definitely a topic from each one of the teams. We all kind of broke out in teams.
You're talking about the X Plan?
Parks, yeah.
Next Plan, right, right.
And, and parks and rec was definitely a hot topic, which was every party that was involved with that.
Good, good.
All right, all right, I would concur. Thank you for all that work. I know that wasn't easy getting that put together in that short timeframe, but we thank you so much for doing that.
So if I said, so the, so the things that are currently planned to be implemented right now are, just refresh us again.
So by, really by the end of October, you will see the ornamental Lexington Park sign and the park rule sign, we'll have the gates installed. We have hesitated on the lining of the basketball court.
Yes, we think we need to make a determination.
Do that, we need to know, yeah, if we're going to reorient that, we don't want to spend the money to do the painting.
Well, yeah, I think we need to make a decision whether we want to spend the money to make that a two court or the one court with the two smaller.
Correct, and if we're going with the latter of that, again, we're going to have to reorient those basketball goals. We would just go ahead and replace them with updated equipment. We can do the park benches again, we've, we've got that equipment, so we'll commit to having that done here this fall as well.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to compliment everybody who's been involved in this process. In order to make meat, sometimes, you know, the input is not what you'd like to see, but there's been stuff that's been left on the cutting room floor here and that's acceptable. In any project, you don't get everything that you want first go around, maybe not even a second go around, but over a period of time, now that we don't have a parks and recreation department, we're playing catch-up. So that's all we're doing at this point. We're just playing catch-up. And we sold that one property, there are forty-two, that John Ames property, for a hundred and fifty thousand. So it ain't like we didn't have money coming in to offset these expenses. So I don't want to hear that business about we don't have the money. There's monies available if we allocate them and appropriate them for this purpose. So right now, the purposes that we've enumerated, eleven of them, I'm on board with ten of them, so very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone else?
I just think that there could possibly be some room for savings if we tell a contractor, say, hey, we're going to order X numbers of basketball hoops and we're going to lay X number amount of asphalt versus just going into doing one park at a time. So I do think that there could possibly be a little bit of savings if we say, hey, we've got two or three basketball hoops for courts to go in and, you know, do it one time. And I think that, you know, I traveled to quite a few parks on, well, what would I meant, Saturday and, you know, literally got out and looked at Parnell and Ridgeberry and Franklin and, you know, they, they all need some love. It's, it's a problem that we have and we know, we know that we have it. We've got an asphalt problem with roadways as well, you know, there's just not enough money to go around, so.
Thanks, Ms. President. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Councilman Scrivens, Councilman Branham, anyone else? All right, so at this time, we'll move to council comments and reports. Did anyone have anything else for Mr. Maranin? All right, all right. And then we're announcing beggars night is the thirty-first then, is that correct? That's a Monday night and that's six to eight.
Oh, or.
Beggar's night, trick or treat.
Yeah, I think that's the intent, so we explored that a little bit in work session, I think. There's pretty, pretty, pretty broad consensus, perhaps with the exception of you, Mr. President, we keep that at its current time. So again, trick or treating, beggars night would be October thirty-first, six to eight PM.
Okay, very good.
It's also the last night to get a room at the Ramada.
Interesting timing, but yes.
Very good. All right, so, so we're going to move to council comments and I'll start on my right this time. We'll start with Councilman Branham.
Just want to congratulate Clayton and Kramer Sel for their feat on America's Got Talent. They placed third in their right here from Xenia. On September nineteenth, we met with the next plan. Thanks for, Brian, for sticking around and putting that on. We discussed housing, economic development, mobility, parks and rec, public safety and utilities. So there's plenty of hot topics and there was plenty of discussions and that sort of thing. It's all geared towards that and setting up the next plan that will be the next ten years in, in the future.
All right, thank you, Councilman Branham. Anyone have anything for Councilman Branham tonight? All right, Councilman Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anything else to add?
Okay, thank you very much. Let's start to my left, we'll go with Councilwoman Dean.
I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items. Number one, want to congratulate the ladies that were inducted into the Xenia Women's Hall of Fame, or was it? Want to congratulate all of those ladies.
Including our former mayor.
That's right.
Marsha Bayless.
That's right. Want to also congratulate our Xenia Buccaneer football team. We're coming up on the next game at the Doug Adams Stadium, will be six and oh, I believe, if that's not, and it's the first time that I can recall, I used to have hair, where Xenia was starting the season off at six and four, six and oh. Last time I was there, the stadium was packed, wall to wall, ceiling to floor, door to door. And you better get there early because it'll be standing room only. We're behind the Buccaneers this year. We think that they're going to go places and if they keep on on this track that they're on, they'll be hosting playoff games. So we just look forward to seeing them succeed. Want to give a shout out to the Central State Marauder football team. They went up to Canton, Ohio a couple of weeks ago and played Winston-Salem State University in the what was called the Black College Hall of Fame game. Well, that was Central's only win this year. Since then, they've taken it on the chin a couple of weeks and they play at home Saturday against Miles College, so I'll try to be at that game. So just having fun during the football season. Couple of weeks ago, I was able to go to the Browns and the, and the Steelers and that was nip and tuck. I mean, what, I say Browns and Steelers, that's who's playing tonight. I went to the Bengals and the Steelers and that was nip and tuck. We got up to go and couldn't leave. Got up to go again, couldn't leave. So, but finally, the Steelers punched it out, so. Also, Mr. President, we're getting down now to where the leaves are getting ready to fall and they're going to get into the storm drains. And of course, storm drains are already clogged up with grass and debris. So I would like to see some type of concerted effort by anyone to, let's get these storm drains cleaned so this water don't back up and cause us a problem. As, as a plumber would tell you, water is your best thing to have and it's the worst thing to have when it's not controlled. So, you know, we've got to control our storm water and how we convey it on through the watershed. If not, we're just waiting on another problem. I'm glad to see that we're now moving forward, since we don't have a Department of Parks and Recs, we're moving forward to catching up on our quality of life here. We're not here just to spend money to buy backhoes and stuff. We're here to increase the quality of life so you can enjoy living in Xenia. Xenia's a wonderful place to live in case you haven't realized it. We don't have a lot of thugging and mugging. I mean, there's a small amount. We keep the, keep the police busy, but this is not, this is not, you know, a bad area to live in. And if all of us do just one little bit, just a little bit each, look at all the momentum that we have. So just say thank you for everyone who's been involved in the Lexington Park process. It's moving forward. I'm happy about it. I think we have a good place to go with parks and recs here in the city. Where else can we go but our parks to relax and enjoy? I mean, that's what parks are for, quality of life. So if we're not investing in it, then we're not investing ipso facto in our quality of life. If we're not investing in our streets, we're not investing in our quality of life. So that's all I have to say tonight, Mr. President, and thank you for that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mayor Mays.
Sure, thank you. Just go over my schedule for the last couple of weeks real quick. On the tenth, Saturday, September tenth, I had an opportunity to attend and actually participate in the SOS Gala and speak to the ministry that Jeremiah and Carolyn Bird do with a lot of folks, both caught in trafficking and addiction, and they do incredible work, not just in the local community, but really throughout the state of Ohio. So that was a wonderful night, a beautiful fundraiser. On Tuesday, the thirteenth, we had the Neighborhood Night Out and it was well-attended. We had that over at Choney Schools and just a lot of fun. It's always, it's great to see people. I talked to several people who said, I didn't realize you were doing this. We were out walking, it was a beautiful night, and just came by and appreciated that they could interact with so many different organizations as well as the city, police and fire. Just, it was a really fun evening. On the fourteenth, attended our first mayors and managers that's back for the season, who took the summer off, but we were in Vandalia, got to hear from Jeff Hoagland, who's the president of the DDC, Dayton Development Coalition. Not a whole lot of updates per se, but just a lot of development happening in Dayton in general. There is a lot of growth in this, in this Miami Valley region and it's very exciting. He did provide a PowerPoint, if any of my colleagues would like to see it and to see what's happening kind of at a broader scale, I'd be happy to forward that on to you. On, let's see, Thursday, the fifteenth, attended the, and participated also in the Xenia Police Division Award Center. Thank you, Chief Stute, for inviting me and allowing me to say a few words and just thank our men and women who are out every day, working very hard for this community. They do, hearing so many of the awards and the acknowledgements and what people are doing behind the scenes, that quite frankly is.
It's incredible.
It is incredible. It was moving and it was something that I just, I cannot say thank you enough. A special shout out, of course, to Becky, Rebecca Andorfer, one of our officers who was awarded the Casey Elliott Memorial City Finest Award. I've known her since high school and it was really fun to see her receive this award. She deserves this award. She is an incredible asset to this community and now doing work in our middle school and as an SRO, so congratulations, Becky. On the eighteenth, attended and participated in the retirement service for Pastor Mark and Anna Brooks at AHOPE. They are the founding pastors of AHOPE back in two thousand. I still can't talk about it without crying.
Sorry.
Mark and Anna have done a lot for this community and they have been pillars in this community. They love this community well and I, it was an honor to be a part of the service and to congratulate them and to do a proclamation for them. And we're excited to see their new pastors, Nathan and Star Funk. Nathan, obviously, is a Xenia local, he knows this community and I think they're going to do a great job at AHOPE and leave that church well. On the nineteenth, attended and participated in the next plan with Councilman Branham, the next plan meeting. It was really great to see how many people came out from our community and just, most everybody that had been invited was there. Cody already went over what we talked about, but just, it was, it was very encouraging and it's good to see people, several people said, I wanted to be a part of this because I don't want to just keep complaining, I want to be a part of the solution. And that is exactly what we need.
Survey.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. There'll be surveys coming out.
Yeah, there'll be surveys that'll get community involvement, just like what we did with the Dylan Group and the downtown redevelopment. So I think that that's a great aspect that, hey, your, your word is going into the plan.
And please encourage people to participate. We want participation, we want to hear from people. And then today, of course, we already mentioned the Legislative Review and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting at four o'clock, and that is a summary of my schedule.
All right, thank you, very busy mayor. Thanks for the time.
And thank you, Councilman Scrivens, for filling in at the will-be-forced convocation that I could not make, so thank you very much.
Mr. President, if I could, there's one thing I need to go add to. Since the mayor mentioned AHOPE Church, my church, the Middle Run Baptist Church, we're going to celebrate our two-hundredth church anniversary. Our church was founded in eighteen-twenty-two by a former slave who was a carpenter nonetheless, who was able to go around to the various plantations and earn fifty-six hundred and fifty dollars in eighteen-twenty-two to buy his family's freedom. He not only earned the fifty-six fifty, he earned enough to come to Caesar Creek Township between two runs of Caesar Creek, i.e. Middle Run, and establish the church there. So this, this, this carpenter guy who was our founder, he must have been a real nice guy. And his family is still have generations today who attend our church. I mention all of that to say that.
Tell me, when's that going to be? What's the date?
I mentioned all of that to say, on Saturday, October the first, we're going to have our two-hundredth anniversary at the AHOPE Church on Stilton Road. And we're inviting the entire community to come and worship with us and sing and pray and just have a good time in the Lord. The keynote speaker for this event will be none other than the chancellor, the president of Central State University, whom himself is a minister in the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. So we're looking forward to hear the president extol what he knows about the Lord God at our two-hundredth anniversary. The public is invited and we, I will especially ask you guys, if you're all here, to sit on the roll with me. So God bless you, thank you, Mr. President, for that extra time.
What time is that? What time is that?
The time will be seven PM, it'll be Saturday, October the first.
All right, thank you very much. Vice President Herschel?
An opportunity to go to the Xenia Community School Board meeting and they had a great program this last summer of student interns. And they did it this last year with the different departments at the school, communications, maintenance, finance, and they had a couple of students came and spoke about their time there and it was a funded program and they did it through the, through the summer months. And the reason I bring that up is the, the school is looking to expand that program into some additional community entities. And so they asked us from a, from a city perspective if we'd be willing to look at having some interns this next summer.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, and I told them I thought within public safety, public maintenance, community development, you know, there's a lot of places, finance, there's a lot of places. And I'll tell you, let me tell you, the two students that they had stand up and speak were about the sharpest kids I've ever met in my entire life. I mean, I, I was just amazed at how the quality of the young men, young women that spoke about their time with the internship. And I think we'd be privileged to get some students of that caliber to come and participate with us. And, you know, once again, if we get kids are involved here locally and see the opportunities, there's a, there's a much better opportunity that they might want to look to stay in our community as well too. So Brent, I don't know who would be the right person on our staff to be the interface with them on that.
Yeah, probably we'd reach out to Jackie Potter, our HR director.
Okay. Are you okay if I talk with her and just get Dr. Jill's connection with her for that? Okay. But anyways, I appreciate the, the school board saying, hey, we, we believe the city would be another, next good step for an internship program, so. The other items, I went to the board meeting for the Green County Developmental Disabilities and providentially, they had canceled the board meeting, but I had a chance to speak with their superintendent. And I don't know how, if, how many do you know about them? They're out on, what's the road where the airport's at?
Valley.
Valley Road.
Valley Drive.
But they do just a tremendous job with children and young adults and adults that, that have developmental disabilities, coming alongside the families there, and then also come alongside the families there, and then also helping families transition their kids into adulthood and, and having wraparound services. One of the places I think we struggle, though, is that the, the system seems to be set up for identifying developmental disabilities when you're youth, and then helping you walk through the rest of your life. If, if you're an adult and you, you are identified, or you have a family member or somebody in our community, and, and Chief, I'm talking to us here about if we're finding folks that are homeless or on the street, and, and we have a sense that there's some developmental disability issues there as well, too, there's a, there's a little bit of a barrier in that they, they can only proceed forward if they have an assessment prior to that person being eighteen. And, and it's tough to, to start working with that individual and try and track back to what school system they went to, and collect that paperwork and stuff. So anyways, it was good to get introduced to their process, but I think we've got a number of folks that, that are, that are struggling in our community who are adults that may not have had this assessment or have these benefits to them. And so I'm, I'm gonna be following up with that, but I, I'm really hoping also that there's gonna be a better way for us to do a structured assessment to get them some, some of these benefits. The, the Developmental Disabilities Board runs a number of, they have contracted out through, towards impotence group homes, where individuals can be placed, and then they also have living home arrangements where, where they have folks that come and, and work with these folks as well, too. And, and I just think that that, we got a number of adults in our community that could desperately use these services. So anyways, more, more to come, I was hoping that the access would be easier to do, and it looks like there's a little bit of a barrier with that from the assessment process, but I want us to, to continue on with that, so, yep, that's all I got tonight.
All right, thank you, Vice President Ursula, so before we close tonight, congratulations to Xenia Bots. Friday is homecoming, and I believe those activities start around six, six fifteen, games at seven, I think they're playing Tip City, is that right? Yep, Tip, so congratulations to them, and for their coach, Mo, who is an employee at the Green County Career Center. He's just doing a phenomenal job with those young men, and so kudos to him. Got a lot going on here in the city, we have a harvest festival, did you wanna talk about that? I know that's another meeting away, but.
Actually, that is October eighth, right? That'll be twelve to five P.M., it'll be working in conjunction with Oktoberfest. We will have all kinds of activities downtown, main crossroads will be shut down that day, beginning in the morning. The intersection of Detroit and Main will open back up in the afternoon, but we will have roadways closed down by Second, Third Street, that, that vicinity. So again, pumpkin decorating for kids, pie eating contest, there'll be craft show, not a car show, but we'll have vintage farm and agricultural equipment show with that, all kinds of activities, really a good afternoon for family. Come out, participate in that, and then come back with the wife in the evening, enjoy the Oktoberfest, and come out and support your community.
All right, thank you very much. Just with Clarence and our, our city planners here, I know you've been really busy, we've got a lot going on. We have planning zoning meeting on October sixth, is that correct? Okay, thank you, followed by, so council has actually a week gap, our next council meeting will be the thirteenth, followed by the twenty-seventh. Our first meeting in November will be the tenth, that will be following Election Day, remind people to vote November eighth. And then our council meeting in November, are we doing that the Tuesday then, before Thanksgiving?
So I think we have projected legislation to come back, the second meeting in, in October?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, to designate, and I think we're gonna designate both the date for the week of Thanksgiving, as well as the week after Christmas, so we'll be coming back.
Are we looking at the twenty-second then?
Yeah, is that the Tuesday?
Okay, just so people can play.
Tuesday, the twenty-second, and I think council will need to make a decision then for your December meeting, I think we'll make a recommendation, we'll have to make a decision for December as well.
You think that'll be the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth is what was suggested, I talked to the law director today, we were thinking the twenty-eighth for a couple of reasons, but I think we can, we can debate that later.
We can move that around, okay, we never had a Wednesday meeting.
Well, there's always things to do after the council meeting, the next day, so being closed the day right after your meeting is difficult.
Yeah, just shoot an email, you guys, and we'll look at our, our calendar for that, all right, very good. So really, other than that, Leaf Collection will probably be starting, what, next month?
Absolutely, and running through the month of November.
All right, and congratulations to our, our police department for their police banquet and awards, the job that you guys do day and night. And we can't lift you up enough for the work that you do. So at this time, if there's nothing else, I'll seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Mandeen, and a seconded by the mayor, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you very much.